Nina, thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetham?
Here.
Lorik?
Here.
Mangum?
Mansfield?
Here.
Marshaun?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Blad?
Here.
Thank you. If you'd please stand for the invocation which will be offered by Pastor Star Redden.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
[laughing]
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation which will be offered by Pastor Star Redden representing the First Congressional United Church of Christ.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Creator God, we welcome you into this place as we go about the very important work of building our city and to the most beautiful, safe, exciting place to raise our children and our grandchildren. It is at times like this when we feel a little divisive in our city that I like to remember the words of St. Francis. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love.
Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that I might not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Thank you. Good luck tonight, you guys. Know that you are the hands and feet of the Almighty in any form that you happen to see him and her. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. We will move to agenda item three, the consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the February work session and the clarification and regular city council meetings of April 20, May 4, and May 18, 2023. B, material claims. Council may wish to consider the material claims for the period of June 1 through 15, 2023. C, council decision rezone of property located at 516 Riverside Drive. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a request from JW Properties Property Group LLC to amend the zoning designation of approximately 3.03 acres located at 516 Riverside Drive from residential medium-density multifamily RMM to residential high-density RH and approximately 0.67 acres of lots 26 through 28, Block 13, West Pocatello Town Site, from residential medium-density single-family RMS to residential medium-density multifamily RMM, with a concurrent amendment to the comprehensive plan map for a portion of the 3.03 acre parcel from public to residential. D, council decision, short plat approval okey dokey pokey subdivision. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a short plat for the okey dokey pokey subdivision which subdivides approximately 0.19 acres of land located at 1452 South Third Avenue into two lots subject to conditions. E, council decision, final plat extension Eagles Landing Division 2. Council may wish to adopt this decision granting a request from Ruth Decker for an extension to complete the final plat for Eagles Landing Division 2. The extension shall expire December 1, 2023. F, council decision, short plat extension Terra Vista Subdivision. Council may wish to adopt this decision granting a request from Heidi's Holdings LLC and Boyd Christensen for an extension to complete the short plat for Terra Vista Subdivision. The extension shall expire December 1, 2023.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was waiting for Rick. I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lorik?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Marshaun?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four is proclamation. We have a proclamation will be read by council member Mansfield of the Day of Action.
Whereas, Day of Action occurring each year is United Way's annual volunteer activation in communities around the world, and whereas, the United Way of Southeastern Idaho will participate in the Worldwide United Way's Day of Action that is a coordinated network-wide global day of service that convenes people to give, advocate, and volunteer to enrich their communities, and whereas, thousands of volunteers join United Way to make their community stronger through Day of Action, from meal and supply distribution to online tutoring and mentoring to conducting wellness checks for seniors and other vulnerable populations, in addition to many other important tasks, and whereas, United Way is the world's largest privately funded nonprofit engaged in nearly 1,800 communities across more than 40 countries and territories worldwide to create sustainable solutions to the challenges facing our communities, and whereas, the United Way of Southeastern Idaho Day of Action mirrors work that we do all year long, building stronger, more equitable communities where everyone can thrive. Now therefore, Kevin England, Mayor of the City of Chubak, and Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim June 21, 2023, to be the United Way of Southeastern Idaho Day of Action in Pocatello and Chubak, and encourage all citizens to join this global day of volunteerism where together we will take small steps to make a big difference.
[applause]
[inaudible]
[laughing]
[inaudible]
[laughing]
[inaudible]
[laughing]
[inaudible]
[laughing]
[inaudible]
[laughing]
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 All right, thank you. We will move to agenda item five, a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. June 28, 9:00 AM, City Council Budget Meeting. June 29, 9:00 AM, City Council Budget Meeting. July 6, clarification meeting at 5:30 PM, regular council meeting at 6:00 PM. Other events, June 16, pokey no paddle, paddle from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at Lookout Point. June 18, Father's Day at the Zoo. Fathers will receive a 50% discount off their admission when accompanied by a paid child. City offices will be closed for the following days. Monday, June 19, in observance of the Juneteenth holiday. Tuesday, July 4, in observance of Independence Day. Garbage and recycling services will operate as scheduled. Ross Park Band Concerts on Sunday evenings from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM begins June 25 and continues through the month of July. This is free of charge to the community. July 4, Independence Day Parade begins at 9:30 AM in historic downtown Pocatello. July 4, celebration activities and fireworks display will be held at the Bannock County Event Center and Portnife Wellness Complex. We will move to agenda item six, the public hearing, proposed fiscal year 2023 budget amendments. This time it's been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding proposed fiscal year 2023 budget amendments. I declare the public hearing open. I would like to remind, before you get started, I would like to remind everybody if they would like to speak on this matter, for uncommitted or opposed to it, we're perfectly, we would welcome that, but please remember that we will keep you to the topic at hand, which is the budget amendments. Thank you, Jean.
Thank you. It seems like we've been here before today. Honorable Mayor and honorable counsel, Jean Hill, Finance Department, City of Pocatello. Again, the purpose of this is to make an amendment to the 23 fiscal year budget. I'd like to just remind you that everyone, that we try to do the budgets as tight as we can because we know that there's going to be changes, but just to make it easier for everyone, and that it requires us to come before council when there is a change from a fund to a fund or from a fund within the city. And so, basically what we're doing here today is we're going from 100, and we're trying to amend the budget, or would like to amend the budget, going from $120 million and $720,410 to $125,903, which is basically $5,182, excuse me, $5,182,820 for the total amendments for this third amendment that we're asking approval for. Any questions?
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Jean? Okay. Thank you, Jean. Before you leave, Jean, have you received any correspondence from anybody that we have not seen?
No.
Madam Clerk, have we received any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay, then I would look for any testimony supporting the application. I would look for any testimony uncommitted to the application. I would look for any testimony opposed to the application.
Excuse me. Can I?
Are you opposed to the application? Yes, you may.
No, I just have a question for you about the budget because he was so brief.
So.
Could you explain a little bit what the budget includes because, you know, I don't like rumors, and I heard that you guys are getting a raise.
So.
Is that included in your budget?
That is next year's budget, not this year's budget. This is not in this amendment.
You briefly said.
The amendment has been published and everything, and so, I mean, he could come back up, but if you're.
I.
Go ahead and sit down. We're not, I'm not interested in making sure everybody goes through the budget all over. If you had a question on what you had read, then that would be one thing, but.
Well, I just ask him briefly, he can just explain.
Jean, would you come back up here, please? Not exactly sure what she's looking for. You did a good job in the publication of this thing. It looks to me like you've got a general fund, a number of different grants that were awarded to the city. Could you just, on a 50,000-foot level, you know, explain, we've got what we've got here, some grants?
Absolutely. So, number one, we're taking.
Is there a microphone?
It's there.
Can you hear me?
No.
No.
Go ahead and continue. You're speaking to us, not them, anyway. They'll get that. They'll get that. They'll get that through the speaker system.
[inaudible]
Please.
We're your constituents.
Sorry, Mayor. So.
The microphone is on. Go ahead.
The first item is where we're asking for Fund 78 to Fund 1 for $208,000 for a computer system upgrade. Number two is to $7,000 for Building Department, Fund 1. Planning Department, $40,000 from 78 to Fund 1. $18,000 for the Police Department so that they can build, get more adequate space on the server so they can store their videos, cameras. Then, again, $1,200 from Fund 1 for the Police Department, another $6,000 for their K-9 unit, which was a donation from Phil Metter from the Toyota. $150,000 from fund balance for the Fire Department. Another $2,500 from Fund 1 to Fund 1 change for the Fire Department. Number 11 is $6,000, same type thing. [inaudible]
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'll just continue. So, on number 12 is from the General Fund Fire Department, $45,000 for Ross Park Fire Deployment. Fire Department, again, for $2,500 for a hazmat incident continuance. General Fund 1, $80,000 Ross Park for the deployment. That's coming from Fund 78. Then, I'm just going to hit the high level. There's another one for the Animal Department for $10,000 to continue to take care of their outside vet services. One from Fund 3, $2.4 million for the fund balance for the fuel station. Authorization, basically, to do that. Parks and Rec, $14,000 from the Fund Reserve to cover the pool resurfacing. $16,000 for the cemetery fund. $800,000 for the airport to do some things for SkyWest for the agreement there. Capital improvements, $275,000 from Fund 78. Emergency Fund, $50,000 to the Rec Department to take care of some building problems that need to be fixed. $132,000 for water, Fund 31. For WPC, $281,000 to use for funds for the Whitman Park Lift Station. Entitlement Fund, $74,000 grant. Fund 81 entitlement, $65,000 in a grant approval to use that. Again, entitlement, $65,000 from Fund 5 to help with the Brady Chapel. Alternative Transportation, $11,000 from Fund 5. And then, multiple retirements, where we're moving from Fund 952 to a bunch of individual departments where they have had to fund unexpected retirements or things like that. That's the summary. Does that cover what you'd like, Mayor?
Yeah, I think that answers the questions. I would like to point out that a number of those, it really looks like, basically, I've got to get to the, basically, items, one through, almost, it might be, one through 18, or refunds or donations and things like that from people that were taken in so we can expend those. And then the others were opportunities, you know, with like the Street Fund for the Fuel Department, and the Rec Fund with some things that we had to do with the buildings and stuff like that, repairs and maintenances and things like that, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Then we will go back to, is there any opposed to the application? Okay, then, C and N, you've been back up here already, so I declare the public hearing Let me get back to the agenda. Agenda item seven is a resolution, city records policy. Council may wish to adopt a resolution updating the city records policy. The updated policy includes guidelines for records retention and disclosure of records. This will replace the city's current policy, which was adopted in 2020.
Ms. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move that we approve the resolution for the city records policy, that we adopt a resolution updating the city records policy as outlined in agenda item number seven.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Nichols. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lorik?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Marshaun?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
And Mansfield? Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eight, surplus and sale of seized assets request, Police Department. Council may wish to approve the following requests from the Pocatello Police Department. A, transfer 83 firearms that have been removed from evidence into the department in accordance with Idaho Code, the policy department, and police department policy. B, authorize the trade of 13 older AR-15 rifles and 20 older AR-15 Uppers which have been removed from service and are no longer usable to the department. C, authorize the trade-in of four firearms transferred to the Pocatello Police Department from the Idaho State Police. F, approve staff recommendations, trading the firearms and purchasing the following safety equipment, 18 optics and firearm accessories from Huck's Customs, a local vendor. D, authorize the trade-in of all three old Remington rifles that have exceeded their service life and are no longer usable to the department. If approved, staff recommends trading in the rifles to Javelin Arms as a partial trade toward the purchase of two new rifles. Funds for the remaining amount for the rifle purchase is available within the Police Department budget. Counsel, who, go ahead, Councilman Mansfield.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to authorize the transfer of 83 firearms and the trade-ins of the rifles as outlined in Agendas Item A through C, and authorize then the purchasing of the safety equipment of 18 optics and firearm accessories from Huck's Customs, also authorizing then the trade-in of three old Remington rifles as outlined in Agenda Item 8, Part D, and as the partial trade, allowing the purchase of two new rifles for replacement.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Cheetham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Marshaun?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, LTAC Local Agreement Hawthorne Road Jensen Pedestrian Improvement Project. Council may wish to approve an agreement and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents related to the LTAC Local Agreement for the 2023 Local Children's Pedestrian Safety Program between LTAC and the City of Pocatello. Subject to legal department review. Total project costs are anticipated to be $250,000 and will be fully funded by the Local Children's Pedestrian Safety Program grant. There is no match required. Council President, Cheetham.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the LTAC Local Agreement for the Hawthorne Road Jensen Pedestrian Improvement Project and authorizing your signature on any necessary documents subject to legal department review as outlined in Agenda Item Number Nine.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheetham and a second by, I think Mansfield got that one. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Marshaun?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 10, bid acceptance award Center Street ADA Project. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and accept the lowest responsive bid awarded the project and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents to the lowest responsive bidder, Bidder M&amp;S Development and Construction LLC and the City of Pocatello for the Center Street ADA Improvement Project in the amount of $253,759.50, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor? I move that we accept the lowest responsive bid for the Center Street ADA Project as outlined in Agenda Item Number 10. Award the project and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheetham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lorik?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marshaun?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, bid acceptance award steel refuge containers sanitation. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and accept the lowest responsive bid awarded, award the project and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents for steel refuge containers to the lowest responsive bidder, Enterprise Sales Incorporated, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just have a question for Tom, if we may. What's the difference between these and the ones that we can fabricate here in?
Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director. The quantity is just what we're looking for here. We can make containers at a pretty good rate. However, we're experiencing an enormous amount of growth right now, and we need containers sooner than later, so we're opting to make a large purchase of these.
Great. Thanks, Mayor.
Counselmember Nichols.
I move to approve Agenda Item Number 11 as listed.
Second.
We have a motion by Nichols and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Nichols?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Mansfield? Yes.
Marshaun?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 12, bid acceptance award equipment simulator. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the bid for equipment simulator to the highest-scoring responsive bidder, Western States Equipment Corporation in the amount of $128,295.53. Council may also wish to authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. Funds for the purchase are available in the Street Operations Department fiscal year 2023 budget. Council President, Cheetham.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to accept the bid for the equipment simulators as recommended by staff in the amount of $128,295.53, authorizing your signature on all documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheetham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lorik?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Marshaun?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, bid acceptance award vehicle simulator. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the bid for vehicle simulator to the highest-scoring responsive bidder, L3 Harris Technologies Incorporated in the amount of $170,900. Council may wish to authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. Funds for the purchase are available in the Street Operations Department FY 2023 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we award the bid for the vehicle simulator to the highest responsive bidder as outlined in Agenda Item Number 13. Authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
[inaudible]
Could you, would you amend your motion to highest scoring?
Highest scoring responsive bidder, excuse me.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by, I thought it was. A motion by Lurick and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lorik?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Marshaun?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 14, an ordinance approving the amendment to the fiscal year 2023 appropriations ordinance, increasing the total fiscal year expenditures by $5,182,820 to account for additional revenues, including grant funds received by the city, and to use previously additional revenues, including grant funds received by the city, and to use previously unappropriated cash balances for unanticipated expenses incurred by the city. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Council President?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the ordinance, Agenda Item Number 14, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that the entire ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Entire ordinance?
Entire ordinance be read, yes, be submitted for publication.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Council President Cheatham and a second by Mansfield. Jared, would you please read the ordinance? Oh, I'm sorry, before you do that, we need a roll call.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Hershaw?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending ordinance number 3105 and number 3116, the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year period October 1, 2022 through September 30, 2023, and amended, and the amended appropriation ordinance dated February 22, 2023, providing for an increase in expenditures in the following funds: General Fund, Street Fund, Parks and Recreation Fund, Cemetery Fund, Airport Fund, Capital Improvement Fund, Transit Rural Fund, Transit Urban Fund, Emergency Repair Fund, Science and Environment Fund, Sanitation Fund, Water Fund, WPC Fund, Utility Billing Fund, and Entitlement Fund, which increases the total fiscal year expenditures by $5,182,820, providing that the revenue to pay for said increases shall be derived from grants, unexpected revenues, and previously unappropriated cash balances, providing that all other portions of ordinance number 3105 and number 3116 shall remain in full force and effect, provided that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, shall the ordinance pass.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Hershaw?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. With that, we are adjourned.